The legislature is back in session. Senators, we've accomplished so much, but we still have a few more bills to go over. And the first bill on the agenda is Bill 374-33. Senator Tom Ada, you are recognized.
Tom.
374.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 374-33COR as amended by the committee. Place it into the third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, as I'm speaking, the page is passing out an aerial photo of the area that we are talking about for the proposed Naftan Manaynata site. Now, the genesis of this idea for this Naftan Manaynata, Naftan means the burial site for our ancestors. And this really goes back, we are now in the 33rd legislature, and this idea goes back to the 21st legislature when Public Law 21-104 was enacted directing the Department of Public Works or Public Parks and Recreation to establish a Chamorro shrine to be called the Naftan Manaynata for the entombment of ancestral remains. Now, unfortunately, the public law did not designate a parcel of land of where this naftan was going to be established. And so, at that time, then, a task force was formed to take a look at this issue and make a recommendation as to where might be an appropriate place to establish this naftan. Thank you. And so, a task force was formed... Thank you, I'm sorry, we're getting feedback from the television back there, and I was getting distracted. And so, a task force was formed, and the site that was recommended was in that area where the old Guam Memorial Hospital was located. So, in that map, that was, that aerial photo that was given to you, basically, it shows their option A of where this naftan might be constructed, and there's also a option B, kind of a northeast orientation, and option A is kind of a northwest orientation. So, why do we need this naftan? Well, first of all, we have about 2,000 remains that are sitting in boxes in several buildings here in Agania. And these were remains that were unearthed back in the 20s when the military was doing its construction. And at the time, we had this gentleman who was with the Navy, and he was a, he was, he was an archaeologist, so as they unearth, during the course of construction and the digging and all that, they unearthed these remains, they collected them. And there was probably about, I think it was something like about 700, 700 remains that were unearthed, and they were taken off island. They were taken off island to be studied, to kind of come up with some characteristics of what the, you know, the Chamoros, their physical features and whatnot from the early days. And those, those remains stayed off island for, gosh, almost 70 years before we were finally able to bring it back here because we wanted to put them in their final resting place. Then, of course, in the early 80s, there was a lot of development that went on in Tumon, and again, a lot more remains were unearthed. And so, today, we've been able to account for approximately 2,000 remains, and that's up to about 1989. And so, what the Naftan Manaynata would do then is, it will take these remains, the, and finally, put them in a resting place, as opposed to keeping them in boxes up, you know, at various places around Agania here. But we want to basically give them a final resting place. And so, the task force then has recommended Oka Point, the old hospital point. And so, to the question of, well, why Oka Point? Why not someplace else? And the, basically, the rationale was that, really, that's probably the most appropriate place to put a shrine for our ancestors because this, from the hospital point, it overlooks Tumon, which was really the only place where our Chamoros ever won a battle with the Spanish conquerors that had come in. Now, of course, during the public hearing, there was a number of testimonies that came in that objected to the using, you know, or erecting a shrine, the naftan, up at the hospital point purely for economic reasons. Well, you know, we should use that property to build a five-star hotel. Or, I know from the mayor's office, although she came on the radio and said, "We object to that because there's, you know, again, there's probably a higher and better use for that property." Now, unfortunately, we never received a resolution, a written, you know, in writing, saying we oppose, we oppose it. I know that during her interview on the radio, she had indicated that the municipal planning council objected to using that site up there because, you know, there's, again, for economic reasons, it's probably better used for a hotel or some other economic activity. There was even another testimony that came in basically saying, "Well, why don't we just take them and, you know, buy a, buy a big grave down at, down at one of the cemeteries and just bury them there?" You know, just, so many words, just find a big hole, one of the cemeteries, and just put them in there. And I don't think, I don't think that's what we really want to do. I think that our ancestors, these ancestral remains deserve a dignified place to be buried. And it comes down to a question of, well, is this a dignified place where we want to put them, or do we want to put them someplace else so that we can use that property for, you know, bigger economic returns? And so, that really then is the, is the, has been the discussion of, that's related to this, to this, this idea of finally, you know, identifying a place, a location for the shrine, and saying, "This is where it would be." Section 3 of the bill, on page 3, talks about then, that within 180 days, the Department of Parks and Recs will develop and submit plans to the legislature for information and concurrence regarding the development and funding of the Chamorro National Shrine. That will be the next step forward. But it has taken us, gosh, almost going on 20 years now from when that, from when that task force was formed and came up with their recommendations. It has actually, the idea was actually, came from Madeleine Bordalio, I believe it was in 1992 when she had introduced legislation that we should establish a Naftan Manaynata. So, you know, it's been well, almost a quarter of a century that we've been just kind of dragging this along, keep kicking it down the, down the road, hoping that maybe it'll just go away. Well, it hasn't, and it won't. And I think we've got to come to grips with, with the fact that, so here's Bill 374, and it's identifying a piece of property. And, and so, we, I hope that my colleagues will take a look at it and, and vote favorably on the bill. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion? Senator Torres, you're recognized, and then Senator Espoada.
Mrs. Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I rise to express some concerns about acting on this bill at this legislative session. I'm looking specifically, I sat in at the public hearing and listened to both sides, and it was very impassioned, the needs of having a Naftan Manaynata. And that's, that's without dispute. We have to put this issue to rest. But I think that there were also some issues that were brought up at the public hearing by the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and, and some of those issues, I felt, were not satisfactorily addressed because in making every decision, and it, I'm not speaking about a piece of property that's valuable and therefore requires extra consideration. I'm just talking about a process where we've, we've considered all of the concerns, considered all of the needs, not only of the, the need to interne the remains of our sina, but also the, the needs of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission as they are mandated by law. And in that regard, I think that I would like to respectfully ask if the body would consider a little more time, perhaps in committee, to fully address the issues that were brought up in the committee report. And I'm looking at, for example, the testimony by the Chamorro Land Trust Commission Director, Mr. Borja. And one thing that resonates with me, among many of the things that he brought up, is that the fast-tracking of this bill, and I'm quoting him here, "The fast-tracking of this bill completely eliminates the formalities necessary to obtain resolutions from a village's municipal planning council, any notice public hearings for this land use change, and reasonable time to digest the ramifications this bill can pose. Further, it also undermines the Chamorro Land Trust Commission's Board of Commissioners, the persons appointed by the governor and confirmed by the legislature, from fulfilling their role in this matter." And so, I'm not saying, "Let's not proceed." I'm just saying, "Can we, can we take some pause?" Because I understand that area very intimately. I grew up in that area. And I also have a great affinity for our culture, our people, our tautamona, and the need to put our obligations in place. We have to respect our culture. We have to bring closure to this. But I think, though, we also have to be thorough. And we had a public law, I know this bill addresses Public Law 25-179, and what that public law established, that commercial lease, that Chamorro Land Trust Commission entered to a commercial lease for that. And so, what this does is it intends to prohibit the Chamorro Land Trust Commission from commercially leasing this property. That's the language on page 2, lines 9 to 11. We are now, we are now putting in a public law that will supersede a prior public law, but we never quite put the first one to bed, I don't believe. And so, my, my request to the body is, I'm speaking solely on, on my behalf, but after sitting in at the, at the public hearing and listening to the very impassioned and very convincing speeches and testimonies provided by our citizens, I think, though, that there is another side to the equation that also has to be fully vetted and respected, and that is the purview of the Chamorro Land Trust, what they need to do within their mandates, some of their concerns and interests, and specifically, give some, give some credence to the commissioner so that we can go through the processes, he points out, and do all the things that are necessary. And we've had other bills that were introduced prior to this where we're doing specifically that, we're ensuring that the processes are in place, we're ensuring that everybody is adequately and fully informed, and that all parties can have a contribution to the, to the discussion so that when decisions are made, they're, they're made in the open and they're made with complete consideration of all the ramifications of the bill. And Oka Point is, is very, very near and dear to my heart. Oka Point was my family homestead. It was given over by my Uncle Frank to the government for use as a hospital. It never realized that potential. I'm not arguing for that point now. But I'm just making the point that before we make a decision on something that really was never even, was absorbed by this government in good faith, but never carried, the good faith effort was never carried out. We never satisfied the, the other end of the bargain to Mr. Paris. I mean, you know, at this point, can we at least take pause and make sure that when we do, what we do with this, this land, it has not been developed since, was not made into a hospital, that we at least vet out all the different considerations? And so, my request to the body, to the author, is, would it be possible to perhaps not fast-track this bill as referenced by the Director of Chamorro Land Trust Commission, and maybe allow the process to continue just a little bit further? I know that it's, a lot of people feel that it's enough, enough time, put this to bed. Yes, we must put it to bed, but can we at least, can we at least know that we can, we can sleep soundly knowing that we made the right decisions, that, that everybody's concern was at least addressed and voiced? Because there, there are some things in here that I believe were brought up but not really addressed. And, and that's all I'm bringing up. I'm not objecting to the bill. I'm just requesting that, if possible, that we just bring it back to committee, vet out those few issues that I think are still left unspoken with regard to the initial handover of the land, with regard to Public Law 25-179, where that is, where that stands, with regard to the Director's concern that, that the process hasn't been completely gone through and that a lot of the, the duties of the Land Trust Commission were, were bypassed somehow through this bill. So, I'm just respectfully asking that we consider if perhaps we can give this just a little bit more time just to be sure, because the project is a significant project also. And with regard to that, with regard to the reinternment needs, all the things that we need to do with, with the remains of our ancestors and with all the artifacts as well, that it'd be looked at as one complete package and that we don't piecemeal it and we actually satisfy all the obligations that we have to our ancestors. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, because of what was just said by the previous speaker on this issue, I was wondering if we could take a very short recess to allow that speaker to speak with the author of this bill and to perhaps get his feedback on her request.
Okay. Shall we take a brief recess?
Thank you.
Thank you for that time out, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was wondering if I might have, if you might grant me perhaps a special request on this one. I was, I know now, I mean during that short recess that we just took, that there are many other speakers who are very impassioned about this particular bill and...
So you want to pass?
If I may, and then come back later on?
No problem.
I would love to hear what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak on this bill. I will say first, Madam Speaker, that yes, I am a co-sponsor of the legislation. And I probably will not have any objection if it's the will of the body for it to go back to committee, if it's going to come back into December session, only to try to address some of the issues that were raised by the earlier speaker. But I really do think that a few things have to be made very clear. Those who attended the hearing saw the renditions of what was going to be put up there. This is not a cemetery plot, and I take great umbrage to anybody referring to it as a cemetery. It is a monument to honor our ancestors. And it might be a little sensitive today because today's the 60th anniversary of my father's killing. But I really do think that we have to honor the passage of our ancestors. Any, the talk about, well, the CLTC wanting that area for a higher and better use with a five-star hotel. I was going to take a tour of India, leaving this Sunday. It was going to be a tour that had, that stated nine different sites throughout India. And one of them was to go see the Taj Mahal, a natural wonder, I mean, one of the beauties of the world. For everybody's information, the Taj Mahal is a mausoleum. It's a mausoleum of love to, of a man to his wife. What I'm hoping that we're building, and I was happy to see the, at least the kind of structure, maybe I would have wanted it to be more Lati-like or something, more Chamor-like, but the thing is, is that it wasn't going to be a hole in the ground and dumping ashes. It was going to be a mausoleum, and I'm hoping that it's as beautiful as something as the Taj Mahal of Guam. And there is no, it's not mutually exclusive, having a hotel near a, near a mausoleum is not mutually exclusive. Anybody can go on Conde Nast right now and look up the top 10 hotels in the world, in the world. Two of them are in India. Two of them will show you that their claim to fame, not only is their phenomenal service, which is seven-star, but the fact that their windows open and look out at the Taj Mahal. So having a beautiful monument to our ancestors, whose resting place has been desecrated and not allowed to rest in peace, the least we can do is give them a place that they can finally rest in peace. You know, to make this personal again, I mean, I'm going to leave here after I speak to go down to the cemetery to pay respects to my father, but I've wanted, I asked my mother to please, can we have him disinterred and moved into a maus, into a crypt so that in my old age, I don't have to worry about having to paint the grave and making sure it's clean? And her dying wish was, let him rest in peace. All we are asking is to find somebody, something better than an office space at DNA building for our ancestors to be reinterred in a beautiful building that could be the downstairs or a part of the yard of a seven-star hotel that's built in the remaining area here. You're not taking the entire Oka Point. You're taking the edge of it, and it's not going to take up that much space. I don't even imagine that the building is going to be bigger than this session hall. It is a monument. And the concerns the CLTC had about the GSP or GPS marker that's at the edge will not The plans that were being discussed with this was to have a nice area around it where people could stroll. It wasn't going to be a whole series of, it wasn't going to be a cemetery like you see in Egypt, or even some of the cemeteries that we have here with all these things growing, built up all over the place. It looks like little houses. I just came, we just came from Taipei, Madam Speaker. It's not going to be like that with a whole series of those things. This is going to be one, and I'm hoping, and I'm with the governor, that it's going to be a beautiful building that he and all of us can be proud of. That can be a site that can be looked out from a seven-star hotel and be, and look across at the, at the Two Lovers' Point, and look down at the Ladi of Freedom. But at some point soon, we've got to do something about reintering our, these remains. And that area up there has been lying fallow for 30 years. And I know why it's 30 years, Madam Speaker, because it was 30 years ago that I spent three months in a minus-three-star hotel, a flea, rat-infested hotel in Washington, DC, so that I could work with your father in trying to buy the Marianas Catholic Medical Center. I spent three months in the Harrington Hotel. Look it up. It's still around, unfortunately. It's a flea bag. We purchased that almost 30 years ago. And that land has been not used. It's been a dump, dumping site. It still is right now. All the, we've been hoping for a seven-star hotel, and this, this monument would not I hope that we move forward today, but if not, and it's the will to move it to December session, I will accept that. But I really do want everybody to understand a couple of things. It is not a cemetery. It is a monument. In the same way that in Washington, DC, there is the National Arlington Cemetery, and then there is the monument that is built for the tomb of the unknown soldier. And that's a beautiful site that has more postcards than we know. I'm hoping that what the executive builds on this site will be something as beautiful. But please, it is not a cemetery. It is a monument. And if properly done, it could be our Taj Mahal as a, as a monument of our love and our respect to our ancestors, whose peace we desecrated by digging them up and putting them in Budweiser boxes and paper bags. They need to rest in peace at some time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes.
Ms. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and stand and rise in support of this bill, 374-33-COR. You know, Madam Speaker, when I came in this morning, I said, I think I was going to take my day slow and probably just soak in, you know, the results from yesterday and really, why, why am I here? And when this bill was coming up on the agenda, as we were looking and scrolling down, I said, oh, yeah, yeah, I want to be here for the national, for this bill, 374. And as we took the break and I was sharing with my colleagues about, our colleagues about this place that they want to erect and put this Naftan Mananaitai on, this monument, I said, what, to me, what better way to give and show our respect back to our ancestors who literally need to lay, to be laid at rest? You know, Madam Speaker, Uncle Joe Garrido, in his testimony, talked about how the Naftan Mananaitai can be considered to be the national monument of the Chamor people, which deserves the utmost respect that can be given. And I do know that, as, I didn't go to the hearing, but when I was looking at Mr. Borja's request, he noted that in, in his testimony, that the era proposed had an estimated value of 5.4 million, and that there was concern about the geodetic survey markers at the proposed site, and also made a recommendation that maybe the shrine should be located around the cliff line on Route 15, in the vicinity of the Hawaiian Rock Quarry. But Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that this site, or this proposal of Naftan Mananaitai was something that was talked about. I, you know, that saying nowadays, since, ever since? As far back as 1989, as far back as public law, 21, with Madeleine Bredalou?
1992.
1992, thank you. 1992. We are over two decades later, 24 years later, right, with my, and we're still here, and we still haven't laid our ancestors to rest, and we still haven't given our respect that we've been taught. I'd like to ask my colleagues to please consider this bill. Do not send it back to committee. Do not. We've had more than enough time. If 20-some years is not enough time, I don't know. But as a Chamor, as one who's learned the values of respect to preserve, perpetuate, promote our culture, our history, our language, let us as a body do something right and put closure to 2,000 ancestral remains that need to be laid to rest. We talked about this property. Madam Speaker, this is not the first time something was asked to be put on that property. This is not going to be the first, the second, the last time. But I will tell you that every time we have a program that's good, something that could help make a difference for our people, the first thing that's talked about is the value of that property, and how it hasn't been completed, how the vision hasn't been done. But when, when do we end this story, or that chapter up there? One way to pay tribute back to our ancestors who have, who need to be laid to rest is build a beautiful place so that our Chamor people can be remembered. Uncle Joe Garrido was right. Who should be embarrassed about calling this something special for our Chamor people? Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. I think two decades is long, is enough time to consider what we need to do. I ask my colleagues to please, please reconsider this, vote this bill, and let us close this chapter so our ancestors can rest. Let us lay them to rest and not be in boxes at the DNA building. Please. That's the least we can do to show our respect back. And Uncle Nsituus Masi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this bill. Senator Masi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Senator Espoada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me to hear what our colleagues have to say. You know, Madam Speaker, I don't think that there's any disagreement amongst any one of us that the interment of the remains of the ancestors of this island need to be put to rest. That's not the issue before us. It's not the issue that was determined back the day either. Excuse me, it was the issue when previous law was enacted and which basically helped to try to address this situation of reinterning the remains of the ancestors of this island. The point, the issue before us today is where? Is this the place that we're going to put it? During the public hearing, I was present. I did want to hear, and I kind of knew what I was going to hear, but I did want to hear it firsthand, of those who were advocating for this bill, for this particular location, and to understand their justification. Let me step back a little bit on, as I, before I go forward. I am torn on this bill. On one hand, you have, of course, the argument that this is the ideal location to put such a monument for the interment, reinterment of the remains of the ancestors of this island. It's It's in an ideal location with an incredible view, with really probably one of the best views on the island, if not in the world. It's just fantastic. It overlooks Tijuana Bay. Across the bay, of course, you'll see the iconic Tulare's Point, and you'll see the sunrise and you'll see the sunset. I too am very familiar with this area. On the other hand, though, you have the point that is being made, and of course, it was addressed, that, you know, by some members here, that there was a price tag that was put on this. $5.4 million is what, at least was the figure that was given to us. The issue, I guess, that kind of has a little bit of conflict in my mind is that when you start taking a look at this piece of property, and I am very familiar with this property because I grew up on this property, this particular piece, not nearby, but on it. The old hospital was there, my parents both being doctors, there was hospital, there was doctor's housing on both sides of the hospital. For the first several years, we lived on the right-hand side. After that, we left, we lived on the left-hand side of the old hospital. And as a young boy, I was adventurous. I went up and down all the various trails that the slopes would allow me to. I even tried to rappel down the cliff, the cliff face, which was a dumb thing to do, but I tried, and as a young boy, because it was part of the adventure. The point I'm trying to make, though, is that if this property were to be developed into something other than what is being proposed in this bill, that could potentially bring in a good amount of money to eventually lay infrastructure in other parcels of land that the Chamorro Land Trust has, which are supposed to be then turned back to the people, which already some, many of the lots have been given to the local people of Chamorro ancestry, to build their homes on. But without the infrastructure, without the roads, without the water, without the power, they're hampered from developing a home of their own, a house of their own. And so the question is, do you give up this potential money, monetary resource that could then help so many others establish their home? Others being the Chamoros themselves, who have the ability to access Chamorro Land Trust land to build their homes? Or do you do it as a tribute in honor of our ancestors and in honor of the Chamorro people in particular forevermore, going forward? I don't know. But I will share one thought, and I really don't know how I'm going to vote. But before I share one thought, let me just, if I may, just ask a question of the author, if he'll yield. On the map that we were given of this property, of the entire property, which I believe consists of...
How many acres?
Forty-three. Forty-three acres. There are two particular five-acre parcels that are parceled out. One is called Option A, and the other one is called Option B. The question would be, who will determine which one they will choose? As opposed to us saying, being the ones to make that decision and saying, "Okay, we opt for Option A, or we opt for Option B, and that's where it's going to be." Because if you notice, on Option A, it has probably the best, the best view of the two, the better view of the two lots, and it seemed like that would be the ideal location. I mean, not that Option B is a bad location, because there is an area that affords definitely also a view on the ocean side, which will also be a magnificent view of the property. But the question still remains, who chooses, and on what basis do they get to decide? If I may ask.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, in that aerial photograph that I had passed out, it shows basically, well, first of all, let's make it very clear. The area that is highlighted there up at Oka Point, we're talking about 43 acres of land. And what is being proposed for the Naftan is up to five acres of property. Okay? That's about 10% of the land that's up there. Now, we have provided, we have suggested on that aerial photograph that, you know, one configuration of this five acres is that Option A, which is a right, that, the northwest configuration, and then there's one with a northeast configuration, Option B. Now, who's going to select that? We're leaving that to DPR. What the bill is saying is, the Naftan will be up at Oka Point. And here are some possible choices of up to five acres. Now, when we get to the next, there's a companion bill that's coming up, and I think when we get to discussing that, it's gonna, it's, I think it'll make the decision process then a lot easier as to which really makes more sense, Option B or Option A. But I, the bill does not, you know, deliberately does not want to micromanage and say, "Here, we want it right here." Basically saying, "We want it up at Oka Point. Now you use your best judgment, because anywhere up at Oka Point will really be sufficient."
Senator, was he able to answer your question?
He did answer my question, which kind of, and perhaps there's a sub-question that follows. He did say, the author did say that a choice would be made by Department of Public Works?
Parks and Rec.
Oh, Department of Parks and Rec. Okay. And that's fair. And I just wanted to understand why there are two different options, and he did explain that as well, is that it will probably become more apparent as another bill comes forward that I also sat in on in the public hearing. But let me just, and I just want to share a point of view that I've had ever since I've lived there and ever since the old hospital was torn down. I have concerns, definitely. I think this is a beautiful piece of property which commercially could be developed, could be leased out, and which we could generate much revenue for the Chamorro Land Trust to be able to put in infrastructure on the various parcels of land we have around the island, which will then allow those who have land on the Chamorro Land Trust to build their homes. I think that's definitely a very important consideration in whether to vote for this or not. However, that being said, and also having said that I am very familiar with this property, and I truly, truly, ever since I was a little child, appreciate the beauty and the vistas that this offers, that this might be actually the right place to put such a monument. And my reason has always been this, and this was even before the concept of the monument was even out there. I always believed that when you have a family, in this case, let's call the residents of Guam, the family, and the family owns several pieces of property, my take has always been, and this is just more of a personal opinion, that the family should really reserve the best piece of property that they have to use for the family, to be able to enjoy, whether it's a ranch by the ocean, that's the one that you want the whole family to be able to have access to and not basically sell it off or lease it out to an investor. Because really, that might be that last piece of property that the whole family could really enjoy and treasure for ages on, coming forward. And so that kind of defines the little bit of conflict in my indecision of how I'm going to vote on this bill. On one hand, it could do a lot of good for developing the infrastructure for homes for the Chamorro people. On the other hand, it would also, the other argument would be, it would preserve perhaps the jewel of the island properties to be enjoyed by all Chamoros going forward. It seems, too, that Option A, if there was going to be a choice, might be the more natural choice. It offers a wider view, vista, and if, whether our local residents or whether tourists go up to visit this site, it could definitely be something magnificent. And I've always hoped that this whole area, the whole 40, 43 acres, would eventually be developed into a park that everybody can enjoy, that would include walking paths, that would include bike trails, that would include fishing platforms, that if you know the terrain of that land, there are certain areas that actually you could develop some good fishing platforms on and be able to cast a line right over the reef. And I say that because as a young boy, I always imagined doing that, just being able to cast a line from some of the vantage points that I used to explore and be able to throw my line over the reef without having to even get my feet wet in the water. But the idea is, there's so much we can do with this whole property, but I've always believed that it should be reserved for this island, for the people, because this is that one piece of property that the whole island should be able to enjoy. Like I said, the conflict in my mind is, there are many families still waiting to build their homes, but can't because of the lack of infrastructure that we have not also been able to place in the other parcels under the Chamorro Land Trust that have been given out to the Chamorro people. So I am, I am conflicted on how to vote on this one, and I'll pray on it for the next few, until this bill comes to a vote. I have nothing, I guess the other question is, if I may, before I close and ask the author, there was a rendition that was shown at the public hearing, that this is, this is what it would be. The question would be, was that rendition just, is that the rendition of the monument that is going to be up there, or was that more of just of a conceptual drawing of what the possibilities could be?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker, and that was really just a, an artist's rendition of what this shrine might look like. But it's still, you know, really, it can be as creative. I mean, we could go out there and just, you know, put this slab of stone in the ground, or we can be creative, and that is an area of meditation, as well as a final resting place for our ancestors. Plant some trees, people can go up there, meditate, looking over the bay. So, you know, it's, we just let the creative juices flow, and there's just no end to it.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate that answer. I mean, even though I appreciate the rendition that was shown, I thought it was a little too dry for my purposes in terms of really honoring the spirits of our ancestors of this island. I think that what the good senator just mentioned is perhaps more in line with what I was thinking, that if we were going to do this here, it has, and then, of course, a previous speaker talked about how the Taj Mahal, you know, this could be that area. I think it has to be something that really does reflect the true heart and the true spirit of the ancestors of this island. I am still torn, Madam Speaker, in terms of whether to vote for this bill or not. I want to do it, but at the same time, I caution myself, because there's a lot of good that could come from the development of this property that would help existing families who are just trying to set up a small household of their own, but can't, because we have not been able to afford or put in the infrastructure necessary for them to build their homes. But I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this bill, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the motion? Senator Underwood, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, you know, I have to also express to you, first of all, the appreciation that I have for the input that had been provided and the thoughtfulness of my colleagues relative to Bill 374-33, and that is in making sure that we reserve a portion for the Chamorro National Shrine and the reinterment of the ancestral remains. You know, Madam Speaker, it is true, our previous speaker had talked about how this is a difficult decision. And on the one hand, of course, we have our inner values that, that help us make our decisions, our connection to the past, our desire to have, to make sure that, that we, our identity is preserved somehow, that we have these symbols, these areas that are designated for, for the past to be enshrined, and not only the past, but the people, the original people of this land. Madam Speaker, there are times when our decisions have to be based on the rational, as what the good speaker from San Rita had talked about. She wanted to slow down. Why? Because there's information based on the rational analysis of what was provided during the public hearing, and the public hearing is intended for that, intended for our community to come in and provide input on our proposed bills. But I think at this point, Madam Speaker, given the fact that it has been more than decades, two decades, that this has been talked about, I think that, I believe that it's just time for us to actually make a decision on this. This is a community that values our elders, that is struggling for the most part to ensure that the identity of the Chamorro people is preserved, especially with the influx of other cultures, including mine, that have immigrated here on this island. We can't really put a value, a dollar amount, to certain things that are important to us. We can't quantify everything, and this is one of those decisions that we just have to make. It's, it's something that's brewing within us. It's not just what is in our minds, but to me, what is really, really helping me to make a decision with this are those things that have been taught to us. There are certain things, certain feelings that just rise up when we talk about the remains of the Chamorro ancestors, the remains that have been boxed up, and we don't even know the condition of those remains anymore. And how, how powerful would it be of a statement to our current generation if we really designate this? How powerful of a statement is that to the future generation of our value for the Chamorro I think it will speak volumes. They'll say, "Wow, yeah, you, we could have used this for a seven-star hotel, possibility." But we value this to be one of the most important, the most beautiful places that we can intern the remains of our ancestors, because that's how much we value what they have done for us in the past. So, Madam Speaker, I really recognize the struggle that my colleagues are going through with this, but for me, I stand in support of this bill, but I also stand to respect the input that our colleagues have shared with us and how they're struggling with, with making a decision regarding... making a decision regarding this. I also want to urge my colleagues to vote on this, for this term, not to put it up until December, because we don't know what would be the decision regarding, regarding these bills and other bills. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Spalding?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if you'll just indulge me, you know how it is that sometimes when you really have something you want to say and there are several points you want to make and you go through several points and after making perhaps one of the stronger points you had, you know, you thought about and you walk away from the conversation and then you have that aha moment, I forgot to at least say one last thing. Madam Speaker, I know you don't have to, but I'm going to ask you, if I may, just to have
You're already speaking, so I recognize.
One, one more minute to just to add one more thought on this particular issue.
This is your Christmas gift from
And I appreciate that, Madam Speaker. And it was an issue that I had brought up at the public hearing. Right now, like I said, it's not a question of whether we need to reinter the remains of the ancestors of this island. That is not an issue. The issue is where? And that was kind of like one of the areas of focus that I spoke to at the public hearing. And I just want to share that for our colleagues to also to consider, because, because of the fact that this has the potential to generate a lot of money for the Chamorro Land Trust to put in infrastructure and other lots. There are other pieces of property that are just as beautiful and just as valuable or perhaps have just as much significance. One of the properties that I mentioned, and I have not been able to get a good answer out of, of Department of Land Management, is that there is a piece of government property up beside Two Lovers Point that, that belongs to the government. And the question was, well, and, well, and, and the explanation was to me, if that could be used for such a thing, it offers basically the same type of vistas, being able to overlook Tumon Bay, being able to see actually a broader swath of island, looking south as opposed to looking north, and also would offer the sunset views and whatnot. And the reason why I'm familiar with that there is a piece of property up there, Madam Speaker, is that because in my first term in the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature, there was a bill that looked for a land exchange, which would exchange some land that was situated right beside the Ordot Dump with a piece of property with only had a designation and it had, you know, of course, all the description, the description of the property in terms of lot number and it was in the municipality of Dedodo. And I at the time was under the impression it was a piece of property in Dedodo that is normally used for land exchanges between private property owners and the government of Guam. I think it's up, up there off East Sang Song, West Sang Song Road somewhere. But when I did further research, it turned out that this piece of government property was not that particular piece that we normally exchange private property for. It was a piece, and it was a large piece with many acres right there besides Two Lovers Point property. And so my question was at the public hearing, how about if we took a look at this particular property beside Two Lovers Point? And I have not been able to get a squared answer, like I said, from Land Management as to who owns it, but I under, but from my own recollection, when we were researching it back in the twenty-ninth Guam Legislature, this piece of property that I'm speaking about was under the jurisdiction of the Department of Parks and Recreation. So there is a possible alternative. So when we talk about the internment, the reinternment of the remains, there is no doubt that we all agree that it's high time that we address it. The only issue, as I mentioned earlier, is where. Now, in this, in this present session, Madam Speaker, there is a bill that is, that will be voted upon that basically sets aside fifteen acres of property and it's near the location that the Department of Land Management and the Chamorro Land Trust Director kind of recommended on the eastern board of the island. And it would seem to me that even that piece of property may be near, beside, or adjacent to the, what's it called? The Hatdin Amwat Chamorro, which is going to be a fifteen-acre parcel that basically is going to be preserved for the growing of traditional Chamorro medicinal plants to be used in terms of future use in the traditional healing methods going forward. That might, that location also might have merit because of the value, the cultural value of the plants and the, and the practice itself, along with the remains of our ancestors. And so I guess the reason why I needed to state that is to at least bring up the point that this particular location that is being put in this bill, which is the old GMH Hospital, Hospital Point, may not be the only suitable location that such a monument, an internment facility could be placed. There are other noteworthy locations that could also be addressed. And I just wanted to add that to the record, Madam Speaker, because like I said, the arguments were made that it's time to put this to rest and we all agree. The issue is where and should it be at this point? Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, does anybody else would like to speak? Let me take a brief recess.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This legislature is back in session. I understand on the main motion that I will address Speaker Wampat. You're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, as I was sitting up there, I was listening to everyone speak on the bill, I'm listening to their thoughts, their suggestions, and they spoke very passionately, you know, about this bill. And one of our colleagues had spoken earlier about making a decision, whether we make a decision intellectually or make the decision with our hearts based on the values, and both of them are, are value systems. We heard the discussion that, which was also part of the testimony of the director of Chamorro Land Trust, is the highest use, best use, the most economic, you know, value to a property that's as valuable as Oka Point. And, and that's, of course, coming from, you know, the mine in terms of, you know, what can we get, the dollar figure? And unfortunately, when we think about it, unfortunately, I mean, the argument was being used that if we lease the, this type of property, then we'll be able to bring in money so that then the government can turn around and survey whatever government lands we have in the inventory and then be able to give them out to the families. In addition, those monies can be used to put in the infrastructure so that they'll be able to build their, their first homes. And we understand that as well. But then there's something that I totally agree with, one, someone of our colleagues spoke about, the other value system, a value system where you can't put a dollar amount to it. And I think that value system really is, hinges on how we feel, what we think, what we've learned, what was passed on to us about our ancestors. Because I, for me, what's important is, is what we learn from our past that basically helps us, you know, to plan for the future. And if we as a society cannot or do not appreciate and value our ancestors, because after all, that's where we all came from, then what are we leaving for future generations? What will we be teaching future generations? And as the years, you know, have gone by and legislatures have gone by, then there are members who are starting then to look at what it is that we can do. We never knew Guam, the people of Guam never really knew that we're going to be where we are today. We didn't realize that we were going, that we were such an island that's so strategically located, you know, that the military wants, you know, to be here. And we didn't know either that with our proximity to Asia, that then there are individuals who would like to come to an island that's US and, you know, America in the Pacific, Guam, the next closest place will be, you know, in Hawaii, but it's a little bit different here. And many times our people, of course, when you really stop and think about this, because I remember the whole discussion about the military buildup was lands and the taking of lands. And I remember trying to educate people about lands, that we don't look at lands as a commodity to really buy and sell. I mean, I know that that's, that's the mantra of, you know, of course, real estate and, you know, making money. But I think for, what I've learned at least from, you know, my parents, who didn't really have any land, but were able to, on, through hard work was to, to get, buy lands, but for those who do, these families that I know of actually use their lands as something they can pass on from generation to generations. And it's like their legacy, it's what they, that's the only thing they can give their children. And I learned that as well from my parents, who, who didn't have any, but yet was able to acquire a few and then had passed it on to us. And as I was reviewing the committee report, and I was there at the public hearing, and one individual, no names mentioned at all, but understanding, you know, talking about the property, how it was first, you know, given to the government, sold to the government, and that there was an agreement to not only provide cash, but to provide equipment, and my understanding about that the equipment that was supposed to have landed in Guam, that the ship sank, so the equipment was never delivered. And, I mean, that's the story I heard when I first came on, because so this is not the first time that this particular property has been brought up to this legislature. I first heard this very early on in, since ninety-six. And of course, the one, and the reason I say that is because it brings me to where, you know, I'm at also today in terms of, yes, how we value land, and it's, and the way I value land is not so much to buy and sell, but for the same reason again, is to be able to pass them on to my children. And I remember that after my husband passed, when I went to see my attorney, I had asked that question, can I put it down in my will that I want to pass these lands on to my children under one condition, that they can't sell it and that they must continue to pass it on from generation to generation? And I was told by my attorney that, you know, no, I can't. Once you give it and it's in their name, then they can decide what they want to do, you know, with that property. And eventually, of course, I've come around, you know, to it and no longer feel attached to the property, but more importantly, it's the, the value of what it is that, you know, I'll be able to pass on to, to my children. So I bring that up because that was brought on very early on in terms of having that And when I stop and I, and I think about where we were and what has happened to all of the, the remains and where our ancestors and what has happened to all of the remains and where our ancestors are. And one person who came, who's been involved in, you know, the Tomorrow culture, the history, and has been fighting all the time for our people, has eloquently spoken, testified that day, and has actually documented it in written testimony, giving the history of how then remains that were dug up, remains that were boxed and sent off island to be studied, and the conflict among our people where some would say, yes, we want further studies to be done so that we can know and learn more. And then there's the other school of thought, they're saying, no, you know, we must be respectful of those remains and we must give them a proper burial. And it definitely pains me to know that an individual who was here, and unfortunately, I know it's named after him because he just happens to be the individual who collected these remains and sent them off island, that they're in boxes, in cardboard boxes. And we don't even know what the conditions are. And I just feel that, and I don't know if you believe this, but, and I don't know if you even remember this. And I never thought about it until just recently. But I remember as a child, in our living room, we had a sculpt, you know, in the living room. And I, you of course, never questioned it as a child, but I remember as an adult, and I was talking to some of the elders, and I may be wrong, of course, everybody has a different story. But it's until that we do that because we want to be able to keep them, you know, with us, their spirit with us. And, but then again, they'll never be able to rest until we're able to finally inter them in a place that is respectful. And when I heard of this bill, you know, I immediately jumped at the opportunity to be able to become a co-sponsor like yourself, Mr. Chairman. And I was asked, Mr. Speaker, and I was asked, why are you supporting this bill in a place that, a property that's so valuable in terms of money? But to me, yes, it is valuable. But the land belonged to our ancestors to begin with. It's their land. And the best thing that we can ever do for them is, yes, is to give them and place them for their final resting on the most valuable property, wherever that may be. And of course, in question right now is this particular point. Because if we don't, then that definitely will speak volumes of how we care for, how we treat, how we value our ancestors. And it will definitely be sending a very strong message to the generations today and future generations. Because a society is only as good as what its ancestors, its people, its parents have taught the children and future generations in the future. And I think that we are very fortunate, as small as we are, as close as we are, in spite of everything else growing and changing, that there are some things that will not change. And that's our value system about how we value our ancestors, how we value our elders, how we value our citizens, our children. For the most part, you know, granted, we hear if a few that don't. But I think for the most part, if we do continue that value system, then we'll be okay. I think our community will be better for it. You were given copies of a site that now our neighbors, our own brothers and sisters are also going to do. And they too have felt the same, are feeling the same way, that many of their remains have been sent off island also for scientific studies. And some of them have not even returned. And I love, Mr. Speaker, your discussion of the Tashma Hall. And that love, of course, from a husband to a wife, but for us, it's the love of, you know, our ancestors, our people. And we definitely want to be able to honor them. We want to be able to remember them. And we want for future generations to remember them as well. And this rendition is a beautiful rendition, very typical of, you know, the culture. Where definitely has, yes, the lapte stone and the two warriors in the front. You know, it's almost like the Chinese custom that before you enter the gates of, you know, a palace, whatever, they have the two lions at their gates. And in this case, I mean, whoever did this, I think is, it's beautiful. And I'm sure now, similar to what we've done with the museum, a beautiful structure that we have up there, you know, is definitely a representation of our people, our culture, our structure. And I'm sure, and I know that the author is not saying that whatever rendition was put together in 1992, I think it was, that again, the architects out there, I'm sure, will be able to come with a beautiful structured monument that can actually be placed there. And a question was asked earlier in terms of a decision as to which section, option one or option two. And to me, my preference, of course, would be option one. And I say that because whatever later on a structure is going to be there, whether it's a seven-star hotel or what have you, like you said, what better view if the structure is so spectacular, just like our museum? It would definitely add to whatever is going to be there. I understand the option B because maybe you want it to be contiguous with the other activities that are happening there. But to me, I think what that would do is that it would kind of just lessen the effect, lessen, I think, the importance, not for us because of the culture center being there, but it'll lessen it and we're not able to share it and let them know who we are as the people to the rest of the people who are going to be the visitors, who are going to be there in that remaining acreage when it's right there at the, more at the cliffside. Because when you really stop and think about it too, is that, you know, normally on cliff sites, you're not going to, you want to be able to kind of protect whoever is going to be up there, that you're not going to really build a structure for any kind of activity up there for fear of any type of accidents, but a structure in which you'll be, that will be so serene and you'll be able to sit, you know, collect your thoughts, to be able to meditate, to take pictures. I mean, it's just going to be a very peaceful, respectful site. And I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I have not even spoken to the author about this, but I'm just saying, and it's up to him to decide. But I really wish that we could make that decision and just make that determination and say that it will be option A that should be the site for the Naftan. Because they, our ancestors deserve the best. It was their land to begin with. And what better tribute and honor is to place them exactly where they were. So thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I understand Senators Nicholas wishes to be heard on this. Any other senator wish to be heard?
Okay, so the legislature's back in session. I don't have anyone else on the list. I realize there may be a desire, but I, a request, but I'm going to give it to the author then to close and send it down.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, uragadesi todui madiskuti pudisti i bill. Ni parapau mahatsai i naftan manainatai gi Oka Point. Nu zahuna be patsadi di puntune ma soangan gi kumbisoson gini. Finenina nu guaao mauluk. Menata dispasuji ta atan talu ta studia mos. Estabente quatrue onius di di ma, ma hasuji esti. I thinu English neanggi shigasti parata hasuji shiga parata studia. We just di di ma agang paralysis by analysis. Pues nu gi inasusuku nu estabente nu nahung na analisa manao isti napunto. Menapogu sata decidis sata fanhono muna. Iotro guaao mauluk na benti nu istina lai kalanu me entalu gi aturodatni i Tomorrowland Trust Commission. Lo magahit nu anginun atan i offer liknia i Executive Director gi ni ni Tomorrowland Trust liknia nu ani mana, ani ma introduce isti na bill. Dispues de staman monadzan manhunta i komision. Ta tazat temponia parofan danyasapa upan diskutis ti. Lo esta guaakasi di di ma introduce isti na bill. Esta kasi guaat dos mesis. Ta distipogu tazza nu mafatu papa pualuk. Hey, napoga gini sa ti, ti istima lagu momi. Nu menata nakloru na istina lugat ni ta atan guaakasi 43 hectares na tonu guaagi. Edwa taspiya parata na guaas ti naftan eno kasi singku hectares. Kasi des putcentu ni hafa na tonu gaigigi. Sa ti sina na tanah, tanah sangi gi singku hectares para i manainatan. I sina para ta hotsei i naftan ni para ta tanafan diskonsa. Estano kalan mampus. Guaao mauluk. Menasata spiya sa benti maliknia di miste ta hotsei gi i naftan. Menasata ta polu para tau tau sanidzu para manhotsei hotel. Guaagi ni nu estana liliku distribute gini nu isti gini i lichotu gini liknia E-Paw Point Development Himalaya Holding Group. We just di di manholum gi 2004. Shaparoh mahatsasti seven-star hotel. Then todizi unli isti gini i condo para time sharedzo. Sa ni mano i representan isti Himalaya Holding Group gi menan ni Tomorrowland Trust liknia para tsaina town esti. Hunggan sina tsaina town gi lo mongai naftan Tomorrow. Estano naamamalau. Lo magahit, danggi mana, angi masedi esti. Megai salapi para i Tomorrowland Trust. Teniki naong salapi para ta midi todui tanu Tomorrowland Trust. Benti sina lukita na guaano masxak kadalak, kada guaana guma gaigigi sa megai na salapi esti para na olum. Lo ottimoniasti na idea tazza. Sa timan malagu ibisino estas ti mampus. Pues shiga ne back and forth, back and forth. Estabente nao, sta bulotsui lun esti. Hunggan, monga, hungan, studia. Guaao mamaisin kalan benti kalan confused di 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 na para semitezuzi ra para nu dos mit na hole in the ground. Ni para ta half foot sei, esti tetlangni. Agasa ta, agasa mastotorgi gi kahitas ya. Lo imanagahit guaain lii gini. Hago unsangan ni gi za sa ipan. Para guaano lukhi nu kasi pareo para naftan. Sa anginun atan esti bunitu na lugat se sina o mono hulu ogiz un kalan una contentu di 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 i nasomua. Ti para semitezuzi. Ni sina lukita usa para place of meditation. Guaao mauluk. Maliknia taspiya alternate site. Gatu gi ta pogat. Gatu gi funizi Hawaiian Rock. Odzi gi po holum. Hafa na ti sina tapolu gi anilibiano para tau tau tap. Ni sina po ma bisita. Lo monga sa ni shitata puluzizu para seven-star hotel.
Madam Speaker, I've, as I listen to all the discussion, and I, you know, I really appreciate, but I've, and I, if I react to it kind of strongly it's because I, the idea of, let's slow down and let's study it more. Well, we've been doing that for 24 years. And we've been stricken by the malady of paralysis by analysis. Well, I say no more of that. Let's make a decision and move on. There was the, there's the suggestion that maybe this bill infringes on the sphere of authority that the CLTC has. And of course, we do differ. CLTC believes that the highest and best use of this property should be to build a seven-star hotel. The sponsors of the bill see otherwise. That it is an area that is worthy to put and construct the shrine. And so, the fact of the matter is that we do differ. And the legislature, I think, should exercise its authority to say, that's where this shrine will be built. Now, we talk about, you know, using Oka Point for the best and highest-use seven-star hotel and all that. You saw the proposal for E-Paw Point Development back in 2004. You know, it was basically dubbed Chinatown. And of course, the neighbors in that area had, didn't want any of that. And so it went nowhere either. It would have been nice, probably. It would have generated a lot of money. Sometimes we're just so blinded by, you know, all this money that can be generated, but it hasn't. it hasn't, it hasn't happened. What this location is asking for is out of 43 acres, we're asking to set aside five acres of land that can be used to construct the shrine. And it is basically a place that can be used to honor our ancestors as well as possibly a place for meditation. Somebody had suggested that maybe an alternate site that we can take a look at. In fact, the head of the museum suggested, maybe we should build it in the area that was initially proposed for the museum. That was in that gully between Government House and Fort Santa Agida or whatever that fort is up here. That area was initially set aside, that gully was where it was initially proposed to build the museum. They suggested, oh, maybe instead of Oka Point, why don't we build it up there? Well, I guess the bottom line is, Bill, the bill is basically saying, we think that's the best place. A task force was put together in the year 2000 to sit down and take a look at what sites might be best, and that was the site that they had suggested. So, Madam Speaker, are we looking, you know, everybody wants the perfect answer, perfect solution. And sometimes it's, you know, it's, that answer, you can't, as much as we want to be so objective and rationalize, this is the best place for it. Because, you know, anyplace else is really not making the best use of, and sometimes you can't, just can't rationalize these things. And the fact of the matter is that there's probably, at least for me, probably just as much sentiment involved that, that of all places is probably the best place that we can build our shrine for our ancestors and to honor them and to have our people be able to make it accessible for our people to be able to go and visit. And what's in that location is really, it's limitless. And so I just asked my colleagues to think about these things and to favorably consider the bill. Thank you very much.
Welcome, senators. On the motion to send to, I mean, 374-33, the third reading file, no objections, order. Senators, we're going to recess for lunch, and please be back at 2:00 this afternoon.